I hereby call to order this regular meeting for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, November 18th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
Allison Papless.
Here.
Amy Palin.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kinney.
Here.
We are very excited that Principal Becky Littman is here with some Central Foxes and a special guest to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening and thank you. Tonight, it's truly an honor to welcome and recognize our local veterans, particularly Mr. Andy Hashwell-Ovich, a retired Army veteran who is here representing the local veterans of our Willmet community. We are deeply grateful for your service, dedication, and the sacrifices you have made to protect our freedom. Thank you. And this evening, we are also joined by a very special group of 4th grade students from Central, accompanied by our talented music teacher, Ms. Delaney Roberts. Last Monday, these students had the privilege of attending our Veterans Day Ceremony at Veterans Park, where they proudly sang the tribute song "A Grateful Nation" to honor our veterans. The close proximity of Central School to the park made this experience even more meaningful as our students were able to walk there and personally participate in this important occasion. And now I know Ms. Delaney Roberts would like to say a few words.
Hello, everybody. We just want to really say thank you so much for having us. I, every day, feel so thankful to be in this district and, you know, have the board and my administration and our community really supporting music and the arts in our school. So just thank you so much and thank you for allowing us to showcase our hard work for you today.
And now, if it's okay, I want to give the students an opportunity to say their names and be acknowledged.
William Johnson.
Malin Berger.
Annie Breskow.
Gavin Meyer.
Maddie Antel.
Juliana Johnson.
Aiden Cogan.
William Crossgrove.
Georgia Keatley.
Eric Guo.
Josie McShane.
Aiden Sugarman.
Emily Hugo.
Jackson Schneider.
Lara Camalucci.
Sawyer Davis.
Quinn Steppian.
Wyeth Brosset.
Grayson Greenspan.
Nolan Patel.
Helena Pollard.
Leelook LePerec.
Charlie Robinson.
And those are fabulous 4th graders. And now, it's my pleasure to invite our 4th graders to share their song "A Grateful Nation" with us. Their performance today will be yet another reminder and heartfelt tribute to those who have served our nation's armed forces. This is on behalf of you, Andy. We appreciate all you've done. And with that, please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for sharing your immense talents with us to honor our veterans and all that they have done to serve our nation. Thank you so much. I really liked that you had the sign language going, too. That was so special. So you are the best part of our meeting. It's downhill from here. So we have merchandise for each of you, but normally, we kind of hand it out here, but that table's too small for all of you. So I'm going to give that there to Andy. And then everyone else is going to get some from Mr. Kraus in the hallway. But you get gifts, parting gifts and favors. So yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, 4th graders.
Well done, students and parents. Thank you so much for bringing them and joining us this evening. We really appreciate it.
I'm going to direct your attention to the lovely artwork behind us. Mr. Emmett Baggett's 7th Grade Artists Constructed Character of the Season Collages, based on the season which captivates them the most. Using mixed media of colored paper, magazine clippings and drawings, students composed and pasted unique portrait compositions which reflect and illustrate their chosen season. 8th grade artists created linoleum prints which illustrate the people, places, and things in life which give them strength. Artists developed drawings which articulate what strength looks like to them, then transferred those drawings to linoleum blocks, which they then carved and printed. All right. I request a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on the 2024 tax levy.
So moved.
I am requesting a second.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the public hearing. So I believe I'm turning this over to Dr. Kremiscoli.
And I, in turn, will introduce Cory Boltzmeier to walk us through the 2024 tax levy presentation.
Okay. So tonight's review of the 2024 estimated tax levy is going to be done at a fairly high level. We just have a few slides. We are in the official public hearing for this tax levy. So the first few things to keep in mind related to what we're asking the board to approve tonight is the applicable CPI is 3.4% and the new growth estimate, which is equal to our 10-year average, is 15.95 million. One of the steps with each tax levy is estimating a limiting rate. As we've gone through the calculation, we're estimating the limiting rate for 2024 to be just over 3% at 3.0553%. And one thing to always keep in our minds is, while there are many numbers thrown out related to each tax levy every year, for existing taxpayers, they should typically see an increase of 3.4%, which equates to our CPI factor for this applicable year. Right. So on this slide, we have... I'm sorry. On this slide, we like to show the comparison in progression of what if we just captured the CPI amount? What if we then... Then we show what is its CPI plus an average of our 10-year new growth average? And then what is our actual levy request? It's what we're actually asking Cook County, even though we know we will not hit that amount. So the first column, we see a 3.4% increase over the prior year, which is $2.2 million in additional revenue. Then if we look in the middle column, that new growth at 15.9 has a value of roughly $488,000. And then if we were to max out our levy request, we'd be looking at additional $1.5 million for new growth. All right. So this slide shows, starting on the left-hand side, the 2023 final tax extension. The bold row is our operating funds, which is the focus of what the board has approved tonight. So last year, we were at $64.9 million. We're estimating... Going to the middle column, we're estimating it to be $65.96. And then our actual levy request, what were the documents that we'll be submitting to Cook County, is an increase from that far-right column to the 23-final column, 5.8%. 3.4% of that is the CPI amount. 2.4% is related to new property growth. And then the bottom two rows you see down there, the Senate Bill 508 Adjustment and the Debt Service, those are amounts that are just automatically calculated by Cook County and do not require board action. And the last item, one of the disclosures that we're required to do is for a couple of different things with tax levy, and I think also when we're doing budgeting, is this disclosure, picking a month and disclosing the cash and investment balances that the district held by fund. Right here, we are showing the month of May, and the district had just over $52 million in cash and investments. That's the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, does anyone have any questions or comments about the levy? Okay. This would be an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding the tax levy presentation. Seeing no members in the audience, we will move on. Having no further business, I request a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I am requesting a second.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the regular meeting. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2024 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2024 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay. If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Motion carries by general consent. This would be an opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Seeing no members of the audience here, we will move on to board reports. We're starting with the committee board reports. We had no Facility Development Committee meeting this month. We're moving on to school finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. So at the School Finance Committee meeting, we met on Monday, November 11th, as part of the Committee of the Whole. During this meeting, the supplemental debt service tax levy was reviewed. The debt service extension base grows by CPI each tax year and provides authority for school districts to levy to repay principal and interest payments on bond issues. The 2024 tax levy hearing occurred earlier this evening and is recommended for approval later in this evening's agenda. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Strategy Committee, Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
We all met Monday, November 11th, 2024, as part of the board's committee as a whole. During that meeting, the board was presented with and discussed information regarding elementary class sizes in relation to comparison districts. The review was presented at the board's request. Enrollment, class sizes, and staffing for each school year are reviewed and were discussed as part of our regular and ongoing updates to the board in the spring and fall each year, and our class size guidelines help inform this planning. Administration is not currently requesting nor recommending a change to elementary class size guidelines. Class sizes and staffing will continue to be reviewed in ongoing ways as we plan for the 2025-26 school year. In addition, during the Strategy Committee, the board received an update regarding the ongoing work of the 5-8 Scheduling Committee. Teams of teachers and administrators have worked together over the past 2.5 years to consider needs, best practices, and must-haves in relation to any scheduling adjustments. The administration presented highlights regarding the current proposal for scheduling adjustments and noted that there is more work to be done on those proposals as teams work to plan for implementation in the 2025-26 school year at High Crest and Willmet Junior High. The board discussed and provided feedback regarding these proposals and additional work that lies ahead prior to implementation in the next school year. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Kary and Administration for the additional information that was pulled together on class size, the studies that you provided. I found it to be very interesting. I think that when you're looking at all the factors, the impact achievement, class size is such a visible one that we all, you know, tend to easily focus on that. And from my perspective, I think it was that Hattie study that outlined all of the factors and the importance of considering so many elements of what's taking place in the classroom. And when I looked through them, it was very evident how many things are incorporated into our strategic plan and how many of those factors we're addressing day in, day out. So it just helped me to have more background perspective as we frame those discussions. So it's interesting, and I appreciate the time involved in providing us with that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We are moving on to Liaison Reports. First up is the Community Review Committee, or CRC. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. So I had the great pleasure of attending the CRC meeting last Tuesday, the 12th, and it was a working meeting. So as you all know, they're working on their topic, which I believe is how do belonging and friendship intersect with development and transition in a digital age? Which is a pretty complex topic, lots to do. They look like they were making progress.
All right. Thank you. Ed Foundation, Dr. Kremiscoli.
Happy to report to the board on the meeting the Ed Foundation hosted on Wednesday, just this past Wednesday, November 13th. It was a lively meeting with lots of celebrations. The meeting began with the GRIP grant vote, and the group voted in favor of supporting two important GRIP grants that were submitted to the foundation. Both grants were for audio-based learning tools, one at McKenzie and one that will go to Ramona. And both of these tools are intended to support audio-based learning, some screen-free alternatives to engage our students as they continue to learn and grow. The team noted that these devices will support auditory comprehension, some calming strategies, academic independence, and also reduce some segregation of students with disabilities as well as support some students who are English learners. We're really excited about these grants and very grateful for the foundation's support of that. So they voted in favor of those two things. They turned their attention to discussing a few upcoming events. They hosted on Saturday evening their Paddle Night, which is an important fundraiser, and it sounds like all sorts of fun for everyone who has the opportunity to attend, whether they're playing paddle or supporting the event otherwise. It was a huge success. Upcoming is the Bingo Night, which is open to families and students from across our community. That will be hosted on January 24th, and that always is a really wonderful event. Students have so much fun, and I think tickets sell out every year. So they were discussing ways of opening up ticket sales so that they could ensure everyone knew when those were going to go on sale and those interested were able to get a seat at the table, so to speak, because it really is a lively event and lots of fun. They also celebrated the Art Grant Update. I spoke about that at the last meeting, but our elementary students are doing an art installation at each of our schools, supporting some of the work that our schools are doing and also really celebrating and learning from a local artist. So we're grateful for their support in so many ways. The Educational Foundation really does some amazing work, and it's a super-committed group of passionate individuals. So we're grateful for their support.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement, or WICSE. Mrs. Palin.
Yes, thank you. So the WICSE Advisory Committee met today, earlier this afternoon, and we reviewed the fiscal year-to-date activity through October 31st of this year and also talked about this past summer's summer enrichment and ESY program and some things to think about for the upcoming summer. And we will meet again on March 18th.
All right. Thank you. IASB, Mrs. Papless.
Thank you. The Joint Annual Convention, this is your final reminder. It is on November 22nd through the 24th in Chicago. I will be attending that. At the Committee of the Whole meeting last Monday, November 11th, we, as you probably remember, considered the IASB Constitutional Amendment, the Consent Agenda Resolutions, the Resolution to amend existing position statement, resolutions eligible for appeal, and the resolutions not eligible for appeal. And in all of those cases, we determined that we are going to... That we agree with the Resolution Committee recommendations on the do adopt and do not adopt. Also today, just as an FYI, was the last day that candidates for the April 1st, 2025 election can, or I guess that timeframe is over, it was at 5:00, file their nominating petitions with the court's office.
Okay. Thank you. We're keeping it with you for the legislative update.
Okay. Last week, the General Assembly reconvened in Springfield to kick off the veto session. They meet twice. They meet just for two days, November 12th through the 14th, and then again on the 19th through the 21st. Very little legislation action took place in that first time period. Both parties spent most of their time caucusing on their respective sort of post-election path forward. The only education-related highlight was the filing of a new pension reform bill. So we'll keep our eye on that and update.
Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to information items. Dr. Kremiscoli.
Thank you. I have a few. First of all, written communication. The board received written communication from members of the Willmet Junior High School Scheduling Committee. The board also received written communication from Dawn Taylor, a WJHS math teacher. These communications were regarding the proposals for the updated 5-8 schedule. In terms of administrative announcements, first of all, a school board member day was November 15th. That day is proclaimed as school board member day as a way to honor those citizens, seven who sit before you here today, who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children and our future leaders. School board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities, and that capacity, they really are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children, of all of our children. They're entrusted with the guardianship and the prudent expenditure of tax dollars and are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of our school district. Our school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for our schools. They set the highest standards for education for all of our students, and they really lead us in an instrumental way. We're really very grateful for their leadership. Our school board does face constant challenges. It is not an easy job, and yet, these seven board members continue to dedicate their time and their service on behalf of our community and our students and our staff. And we're really exceptionally grateful. So thank you all for your service. We have a small token of appreciation at your desk for you, and we really just want to give you a round of applause and say thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Other announcements, fall conferences and fall break are coming up. As we approach fall break during the week of Thanksgiving, our teachers and staff are also busy preparing for our Fall Parent Teacher Conferences, which are Thursday and Friday. I know I've heard from, in my conversations with teachers quite a bit already this week, that they are very busy getting ready for conferences. These conferences offer an important opportunity for teachers and parents to connect regarding each individual student's learning progress and growth. We thank our teachers for all of their preparation to ensure this time together is full of meaningful collaboration and celebration, and we thank our parents for taking the time away from their busy schedules to meet with our teachers. Freedom of Information Act requests, we did not receive or process any this month, and so we can move on to annual business.
All right. I would like that. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Tony DiMonte, who will present and provide an overview of Willmet District 39's long-term enrollment projections.
Thank you. I'm going to display the charts that are in your board packet and walk through those. And then at the end, if there's any questions, feel free to ask. The first chart, by the way, this is painting a picture of not just the students that we serve, but the families we serve. Sometimes I get asked why are home sales in there or other pieces of information, rental properties? I think it just paints a complete picture of the community, as well as the community's mobility rate and other factors of educating those kids and families. The first chart shows the overall trend of district enrollment. Our Fall Enrollment Report showed the first increase in enrollment, albeit very small, after decreasing year-over-year in the previous eight years. For more detail on that historical enrollment, you can reference the Fall Enrollment Report from October 28th. This chart shows the number of students living in rental properties. The total number of students living in rental units this fall is 196, which is similar to the last two years. Although some of this drop could be, in recent years, attributed to lower overall enrollment, it could also have contributing factors such as a decline of residential rentals, record-breaking housing markets, sales prices that are just through the roof at the moment. But it does show at least that decline in how many rental units our students are living in. We also check home sales, as just mentioned, and their value. Home values continue to surge in Willmet with another drop in sales over the last few years. I'm sure the two are related. We do have families moving in, but not at the pace that we once did. So there's a... Actually, let me go... Keep it here. There's a couple of developments to keep an eye on that are not one-to-one, single-family home replacements in Willmet. For the last few years, we've been reporting on the newly constructed 2010 Central Avenue, which has 100 rental dwelling units. When we talked about this one year ago, they were at a 50% occupancy rate that we didn't have any students coming from that property at that time. They're now at, in speaking with their sales office, their management office, they're at 100% occupancy rates. they're at a hundred percent occupancy rate, and we have four students from that property. Recently gaining, very recently gaining, final approval from the same developer will be seven thirty-nine Green Bay Road. It will take over seven twenty-one to seven thirty-nine Green Bay Road, the former Imperial Motor Site, and will have one hundred twenty-eight condo units. So I know there's been some talk of, will they be apartments? Will they be condos? I was able to confirm they'll be condos. So that's different than the first property, which are apartments. Their belief is that we'll probably gain just as many kids from that second property as the first, and that's their opinion in the sales office. I concur. But time will tell. The Sacred Heart Convent at twenty-two, twenty-one Elmwood Avenue near Harper Elementary School will be closing. I'm not sure why that's not well-known, but it's not, apparently, but it has been in the paper, at least for a year. And they'll be looking to sell the property with the building retained. So the, there's a belief that it will be converted into senior housing with the potential of subdividing the property for single-family homes. It's not, it's a big property, but it's not a huge property. And if you look at the size of the homes over there around that area, again, probably if that were to happen, probably won't gain up, gain us a substantial amount of students, just given what we know, but it could gain us some. Or it just stays as vacant land around there and becomes parks and recreation and walking paths for that senior housing. So it's yet to be determined, and will be probably decided by whoever buys it and develops it. So Beth Hillow at twenty-two, thirty-two, twenty Big Tree Lane was recently, I think it was the spring, purchased by Willmett Park District, who will be renting it back to the people that are, that were there previously until they identify a permanent location. I think they were thinking it would take about eighteen months to find an alternate and smaller, right, better-sized physical location for them. It's a five-acre plot of property that will not become housing. So the Park District has purchased it for future use, undetermined. There are a lot of thoughts floating out there. Will the community finally get some kind of indoor swimming facility? Will it be something else? But something will come of that property that will not result in homes, that will not result in students for us. And then every year, there's always a few properties that are torn down and are just become a yard, and then there's equally as many, anywhere between two and four, according to the Department of Community Development, where someone buys a lot and then subdivides it into two. So two somewhat cancel each other out. We're a very stable community. Uh, you can see the, on the chart there, the, that shows the permits for new residential construction. These have been decreasing in recent years. Kindergarten participation rates have fluctuated slightly in recent years. However, the rates are predicted to trend a little higher. This fall reached the highest kindergarten rate on record in recent years, as enrollment, you heard me say this last month, was up by forty-one students from the fall of two thousand twenty-three. In addition to birth rates, the numbers increasing could also be attributed to all elementary schools offering keep thirty-nine, could be the program fee reductions that we saw. And it will be interesting to see what full-day K at no additional cost yields us when there is choice in the community, but we now become the cheaper option and a high-quality option for no additional cost other than the taxes. So right now, I'm going to go through the schools, these very year-to-year, and, but you'll notice not large swings in enrollment. It's generally very stable. Keep an eye on that scale. But here's Harper School Enrollment. By the way, the second column, that second dot is this fall, so you can see what the next five years would look like as predicted today and projected today. Ramona Elementary School. That's just kindergarten through fourth, not pre-K. McKenzie Elementary School. Central Elementary School. High Crest Middle School. Willmett Junior High School. So over the next five years, our elementary school enrollment is projected to increase slightly at most of those schools. High Crest Middle School will fluctuate up and down a little bit, and Willmett Junior High School enrollment is projected to be relatively stable, possibly a very slight in, in decline. In ten years, the Berger Systems is predicting that enrollment will be higher, but just by a hundred twenty-five students. So that's their ten-year projection. You see what the five-year is, again, relatively stable. Perspective, as you go back and look at that enrollment, ten years ago, we were about four hundred students more than we are today. Ten years will gain an additional hundred twenty-five. So we're not going to re, go back to the levels that we once were, but we are going to at least move a little bit upward. And it's, every year, this information's up, that's what may change year year, and next year, again, with kindergarten changes, we'll get a better idea how that will impact our projections. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Caesar Eddy.
Thank you. That's excellent report. Appreciate it. Yep. It's good. It's good to see the stable population. It, it's good because you've invested capital into building classrooms, and it would be, I'm sure, from your perspective, very frustrating if we decline quite a bit, but that, that, those efforts, those efforts are, well, well-done, and we're filling those classrooms, and hopefully you won't see very many vacant classrooms through, at least the next ten years. Willmett in general is a very stable community, no major developments. People move in, they move out as the kids age. I mean, it's just, it's been the same thing for the last ten years that I've been looking at this.
Anyone else? All right, thank you for that. Very thorough. All right, this would be another opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. But there continue to be no audience members here, so we will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the Consent Agenda? Okay, Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four through November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four in the following amounts. Educational Fund, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars, thirty cents. O and M Fund, one hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars, ninety-three cents. Transportation, two hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, seventy-four cents. Capital Projects, two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Total All Funds, nine hundred ten thousand, thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. I move to approve the manual checks issued between October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four and November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four in the following amounts. Educational Fund, five hundred one thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. O and M Fund, seventy-five thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars, thirty-eight cents. Transportation, one thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars, fifty-six cents. Total All Funds, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs?
Yes.
John Caesar Eddy?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes. The yeas have it, motion carries. I seek a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-four tax levy.
I move to approve the two thousand twenty-four tax levy and accompanying resolutions contained herein for requested amounts that can be summarized as follows. Educational, fifty-four million, fifty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. Operations and maintenance, ten thousand, three, I'm sorry, ten million, three hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars. Transportation, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars. Working cash, forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. I M R F, two hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars. Social Security, one million, seven hundred twelve thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars. Tort immunity, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars. Special Education, five hundred five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Total aggregate levy of sixty-eight million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs?
Yes.
John Caesar Eddy?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes, motion carries. We're moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good and welfare?
I'll take a moment just to introduce the board to the new executive assistant for the superintendent and the clerk for the board. Marjorie Caravas is here with us, and she'll be training with Nancy until Nancy's retirement at the end of December. So welcome, Marjorie, and, and congratulations.
Glad to have you with us. All right. I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, individual student matters, collective negotiations, and specific personnel.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiation matters, specific personnel, and individual student matters.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesar Eddy?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes, motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the side, the time is seven forty-two PM.